Welcome, everybody to Norwood City Schools September 11, 2018. You can call the roll, please.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Ballen?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Present.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, Mr. President, I would like us to discuss first our construction update. Our number 3.01 is on its way, so we can begin with our construction update. Wanted to let me know that we have moved into the fieldhouse, and I wanted to remind everyone of the scope of the work in the fieldhouse. That is to get a new roof, of course, and plumbing, a family restroom right as you enter from Elm Avenue, so they want you to go downstairs to access the restroom area, new heat, new air conditioning, lights, paint, and they say it's intended to be finished by the end of October. So we will remain hopeful. We have put plans B and C in place in case the fieldhouse is not ready for basketball season. The west wing, the second and third floors were released till prior to the start of the school year, and the painters left quite a mess, quite frankly. Monarch now has a new painting subcontractor, so the one that left the mess is not working for Monarch anymore, or at least on our job. On the ground floor of the west wing, that has not been released to us, and there are two classrooms on the first floor that have yet to be released to us. When I say released, I mean Monarch is not complete with their work yet, and then just as a reminder, the clinic is also not ready. They expedited a little bit of work in there that was really supposed to be part of phase three, but because they were so close to work, it just made sense for them to go ahead and make that part of phase one. So while they are working on new fixtures and new plumbing in there, the air conditioning is not, will not be put in until that's part of phase three, as well as the ceiling tiles and the new lighting. So we have agreed that no one will move into a space until Monarch has left it, has released it to us, and it's clean to our satisfaction. And then at that point in time, Scarlet Oaks will be able to polish the floor and make it appear to be a finished product before any of our team members move in. I would like to share that we do have a standing meeting with SHP, and Monarch already is in it, is there as well, John Peters there, Julie Camp House is there also. We meet weekly, on average, our meetings last almost half a day, but they're pretty pointed meetings, and we work through a number of things, and so we will continue to do that so that our taxpayers end up with a really high-quality product at the end. As we know, we all recognize that we're here at really historical times, and we want to do good work, and we want, as children, the adults that are working there, and the taxpayers are doing really proud of how their money was spent and the space that we get to offer the community. Julie had, Ms. Camp House, had a few things she wanted to add to that with regard to some of our recent work with change orders. Remember, the architect came in and talked to you on July 31st and explained what would happen during the abatement of the east wing. A change order was issued for us to review, and it didn't match what we had talked about at our July 31st meeting, so we sent it back to him to review and try to reconcile what we wanted to have happen in that change order, so we're waiting on that. I will need you to officially approve that change order, so I'd hope to have it on Thursday's agenda for next week. If we're able to get it reconciled, it'll be on Thursday's agenda, because we need to move forward with it.
So, question, is this the big change order?
It's part of the big change order. This will be the abatement, which just is going in and taking out all of the hazardous materials, and then I'm sure there'll be at least one other change order to go in and rebuild it so that it's usable space.
Okay.
But it's part of the one point, almost one million, that we talked about before.
Okay. Now, and their document that they've submitted to you, have they dialed down to what that final numbers could be? Because I know there were some, there were some contingencies in there that would make that number go a little bit higher.
There were, and one thing that I wouldn't mind mentioning to you also, you can help me decide what you're remembering of July 31st was, we talked about the asbestos on the exterior walls and how they were going to resolve that, and it was my understanding that they were going to remove as much of that asbestos as they could and then put a wall, build a wall on the inside of the outside wall, so that it, if there was any additional there, any additional asbestos left behind, because it's a fibrous material, the brick is, that it would still be a safe space for students. And that was what my issue was with the change order, is that it did not have removing the asbestos from the outside, or the inside of the exterior wall.
Yeah. I didn't remember them, I thought they were just going to seal that wall, mark it as asbestos, and build a false wall on the inside of that.
That's how I remember it, enclosment.
Yeah.
But that they, I remember them acknowledging that it would be very difficult to get it off the brick.
Right.
So they were...
So they were going to get as much off as they possibly could.
Correct.
Enclose it, and then build a wall.
Yes.
That's where I recall.
That's what I thought, too, yeah.
There were two phases to, on that outside wall. There's the part that they could easily remove, and then they said they would almost have to go in with like toothbrushes or wire brushes and kind of scrub the rest of that, and it was really time-consuming and it'd be expensive. And we had talked about not doing that part of it, so removing the majority of the asbestos, but leaving what will, will remain, and then building the false wall, sealing it off and building the false wall.
So now, with the change order, with us saying that, that, you know, we thought you were going to remove the most of the plaster.
Right.
Which the asbestos was in, they've come back with two other change orders, and they're quite a bit higher. So what we need to decide now is, are we going to leave all the plaster on the outside wall, the inside of that exterior wall, seal it and build a wall in front of it?
When you say quite a bit higher?
The first change order I got was 291,000, the second one was like, I can't remember, 300 and something thousand, and the other one was like 450,000, so there's quite a bit more.
So if they already issued us the initial estimates for all, I believe there were three different options that we were looking at, with prices for each one, why is it so much higher?
We, I just got it today.
Okay.
And I have not had, we will address that in our Thursday meeting.
So we should let me know, we'll be working with our legal counsel, and we'll be working with, I'm sorry, with SHP, and we'll be working to address that this week.
But that's what the delay was.
To represent well.
Yeah.
And make sure that, once again, our students and our community get the absolute best.
Have we had any follow-up with the possibility of any recompense from the misrepresentation of estimate in the beginning?
From our environmental contract?
From the environmental contract?
Not yet.
Okay. I do have another question, not related to the change order, but has there been any, any word from Monarch as to the timeline for the rooms that they have turned over that do need, like the floors replaced with their plywood on the floor? They given any idea of?
They have, they have. I'll let John speak to that.
Okay.
So in the beginning, they did not recognize that that was a problem that they had caused. Initially, they thought it was perhaps a ceiling leak or water leak that we experienced for some reason every August, but we were able to help them to understand that that was not true. And so it took some doing, and John was a big part of helping them to understand it was likely from a paint sprayer, the condenser had leaked.
That was, that was my best theory, is it was the compressor on the sprayer that every once in a while has to discharge water or moisture from the, from the tank, and if that was left with the valve open all weekend long, there'd be a puddle on the floor, soaked in the floor, bubble on the floor. That's the best theory we can come up with right now that would explain how that happened. It always seemed to happen in the center of the room, too, which was exactly where they would have put their sprayer, their piece of equipment. So they, they came to us and they said, "Well, if you find a matching parquet floor, we'll make sure it gets installed." So we kind of looked into a couple of different lumber suppliers. The most recent thing we've contacted was Blueford Jackson, who is, I think, fairly well-known in the area for working on hardwood floors, so we're waiting to get a quote back from them, and then we intend to pass any cost on to Monarch for the expense of fixing the floors.
So it's, it's ever-evolving. I will say, the middle school teachers have very much so appreciated the air conditioning, and the students as well. In fact, I heard someone say, "I think it's cold," and I immediately said, "Don't turn off the air conditioner, you just don't need it." So, but no, I think it's really changed the learning environment, and for that, I'm really grateful. John, is there anything more that you think we can add as regards to our construction update? Then we talked about colors in the fieldhouse, and we elected to just keep the colors exactly the way they are. I know they talked about how it would take about a month to paint the space because of just the curing process of the paint.
Down in the locker rooms, they've got some cinder blocks torn out so they can access the pipes. I was kind of excited to see a couple days ago when I was down there. Just walking past the fieldhouse to see the people on the roof doing the work that they're doing is exciting. You can see them just progress from basically the auditorium side towards the Elm Street side, and I think they're a little more than halfway now, so that's...
That's awesome. So they're not saying end of October instead of Thanksgiving?
I'm sorry?
You said October instead of Thanksgiving?
So initially, when we talked, we hoped for the end of November, but they report the end of October.
Well, that's...
Even with the paint?
I...
Wow.
Nice.
We've heard three different dates, so...
We're not betting on any for this.
We're hoping.
The first date that Alex gave for the first day of practices, well, I think, was October 25th or 26th, or somewhere around there.
The first game is like December 4th.
Right, right, so there's, there is lead time between the end of October and early December. I'm really trying to hold them to that late October date, but it seems like every couple of days, something happens, or say, "Well, we're not going to go and paint that end of October date." I'm like, "Well, keep trying." So, we'll see.
One thing I failed to mention in the scope, and that is, as you walk into the, from the Elm entrance, there's probably, it's not even a full step, but they intended to make that more ramp-like, or to take away that one step, so it would be very easily accessible. Have we forgotten anything on the scope? I think that captures.
Does the new lighting extend into the fieldhouse as well? Because I remember the big, the lights, and those are getting replaced as well.
Those have actually been switched out about six or seven years ago.
Oh, okay, that's great.
We put in fluorescent lights, four, two-foot by four-foot fluorescents, and they each have their own motion for each fixture. Currently, it's been six or seven years since those have been put in. The problem we found with those, though, is volleyballs and basketballs tend to hit the motion sensors that hang off the fixture, and so a lot of times, the motion's just kind of hanging by a wire, so lights are still included in the, in the project.
So exciting, it's exciting.
It is.
We'll be finished, we'll be, we'll be happy when it's finished, but it's exciting. I can say, both buildings, the middle school and high school, everyone involved has been very gracious when it comes to noise, lack of parking, all of those changes that it just naturally, naturally caused in construction.
I actually did mean to ask, is the, because of where the, the trailer things are on the edge of the parking lot, that used to be senior parking, are, are students now restricted for parking?
They're not.
They can just...
They're not there, actually, most of them park in the same spot anyway, but it's right by that, I call it a pumper, what would you call that large metal thing, close to the city parking, right on the corner there, where we put up the tent for Christmas town?
Okay.
Guard rail.
The guard rail. Thank you. The guard rail. They usually park right there along that, on the hill.
Okay.
I guess that's exciting for senior parking, yeah, where most of those old people might not park, so, yeah. Mr. President, it's all right with you, I'd like to move forward with our 2019-2020 school calendar. So this is a calendar that I had shared after working with a number of folks, to look at it critically, and that was, is our NTA president, as well as our ASPE president. So both have looked at that, they reviewed it, they've given their nod, their agreement. There's one big difference, I would just, to be quite transparent about, and that is that, generally, we have a professional development day in the month of December, and we have moved that to the very front end of the school year. So when I say that, I'm saying that we have two professional development days, as it stands now, we have one, and then a teacher work day. This would provide two professional development days, and of course, we'll start, then a work day, then the first day of school for children. So we think that will help us, one, be better prepared for the start of the school year, it'll allow us to do a number of different items that are actually required prior to children and then their doors officially. So we think that's a good move, we'll tense it out next year, and of course, the construction that provides us with time in the event that we have something that's challenging, that we can prepare. So, other than that, that all of the professional development, the amount of days, the number of days children are in session, all of that remains the same, pending snow days. Those we cannot predict at this time. So, any questions about the school calendar for next year? Okay, I think it's all right with you, just for them to move to item 3.01, which is the Dean of Instruction from Scarlet Oaks, Dan Rush. Dan has rushed to get...
Better later, no, I wish I rushed to get it.
And you're sure you're here safely?
Yeah.
So welcome to Norwood City Schools, Dan. We, of course, for years, Norwood has partnered with the Oaks, and we're excited for all that they've done over the many, many years for Norwood students, and so he's here tonight to tell us a little bit about the programming.
Yep. Answer any questions you might have, and then also discuss, if you may not be aware, we have a levy coming up in November, so we talked about that. Sound good?
Dan, do you need to use some technology?
Uh, I believe, yeah, do you want to, may I sit there?
Sure.
Get care of the waters.
Here's a pretty good tantrum. Mr. Drake, welcome. Everyone needs Steve.
Steve was ready to punch.
He said, he said he was on the seventh floor.
And Lynn, of course, they can all have.
I know. I do apologize, it was a crazy day at the building, and then I had every intention of, I left early to get here, and the expressways are not cooperative if you're trying to get to Norwood this time of day with all the different traffic. So, again, I'm Dan Rush from the Dean of Instruction at Scarlet Oaks. Thank you for your time. You can dig up my notes here, I'll slide them PowerPoint. Feel free to jump in anytime if you have any questions, and if you don't mind, I'm actually just going to sit down and kind of run through it. But if you have any questions, please ask. If there's not anything, that's out of bounds as far as I'm concerned. So this was a, this is a general presentation put together by our district. We're going around to all of our 36 different school districts, presenting at the boards, so there's certainly some information that we will customize for Norwood as well. We serve 36 different school districts. Scarlet Oaks is the campus that Norwood is closely associated with. Norwood is our largest, our third-largest feeder for Scarlet, we have 10 main feeders. We've worked with Norwood, I've been with the district for 15 years, always had a close relationship with Norwood. Former Dean of Instruction Julie Woodwork, who now works in our district office as a Norwood resident, and she's still at district office. Is there any home yet? Can you swing by Norwood and get the presentation? She said I'm still in district office, so, these are all the communities we serve, the 36 different school districts, so the red outlines our footprint for the district, 13 different counties. Long and the short of this, we have a levy coming up in November, we need to carry Hamlin County. Even though we cover 13 counties, the population percentage that we serve in Hamlin County far exceeds what we serve in the other 12 counties that we work with. So that's why Norwood is definitely one of these critical communities that we need to work with, so we're here to get the message out. So these are the four campuses against Scarlet Oaks, which really is very close to Norwood as the Pro Fly's, but not when you're trying to drive your car here at 5:00 in the evening. So Scarlet Oaks there, if you've not been to the Scarlet Oaks campus, I'd be more than happy to give you a tour at any time, day or night. It is the campus that honestly is open 24/7, the only day we don't have students on that property is Sunday. Most of our adult education runs through there, most of the city's police officers have been trained or retrained in our public safety. We are the only school in southwest Ohio that has a live firing range on property, which drives our insurance company crazy, which I'm sure as board members, you understand that, so we have that through our adult education. Most, again, most of the Norwood students go to Scarlet Oaks. There are some exceptions. Diamond Oaks and Live Oaks each, each have two Norwood students. There are 55 students that attend Scarlet Oaks from Norwood this year. Yes?
I know you said that we were the third-largest feeder, do you happen to know which fields Norwood students tend to go towards the most?
There, there isn't necessarily a particular field, but I can actually get you the breakdown. It varies from year to year. Our most popular programs tend to be in healthcare, that's where the jobs are, so that's primarily where most students attend. We offer more healthcare fields than we do any other, but automotive is still popular, cosmetology, there isn't necessarily a direct field, but I can certainly pull that information off, you know, where, you know, is there, I would even want to show you trend data, where, you know, where the Norwood students typically go.
I would love trend data, that'd be great.
I don't have a problem with that. Hey, myself, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'd be really good to know for our students, if they're interested in certain fields, we can help on this end.
What we can also do is, what we always try and do especially, we have students that come back and present to the sophomores, you know, from Norwood students presenting to Norwood students, and then we also try and get alumni that have been successful and continue to be successful that are gone through both Norwood and Scarlet, to come back and speak with the students, in a variety of different fields. So, again, who do we serve? The focus here today is Norwood, but just overall, in case somebody were to ask you, annually, we work with 19,000 high school and middle school students, 18,000 adult. We have quite a few satellite programs, so for those of you that may not be aware, satellite program is something that the Oaks operates, but it would exist in like a Norwood high school. I'm not over any of the satellite programs, currently, Norwood does not have these satellites, but I do believe that's something that is in discussion moving forward with the district. So some of those might be some business programs, maybe some Project Lead the Way, some STEM programs, those are things that, really, in the last 10 years, since our last levy, we've definitely expanded it, and actually, we serve more high school students through our satellite programs than we do through our campuses currently. 31 different programs, 21 of which are offered at Scarlet. Again, healthcare, firefighting and robotics are actually unique to the Scarlet Oaks campus, and are pretty big attractions as long, as well as that long portion. Aviation is only at Laurel Oaks, it's a pretty far drive for students from Norwood to go all the way up to Wilmington, since exit 45 off of 711. Satellites I just spoke about, again, 16,000 students are taking different programs. We go all the way down to fifth grade in some districts. That's actually, that's only at three rivers right now. That was an experiment that the state's kind of running to see career exploration earlier grades. Typically, our program starts in the seventh grade and goes from 12th grade. Partnering with employers, we have 1,442, actually, that number is always fluctuating, advisory committee members, so every program that we offer is required to have an advisory committee member, made up of local businesses, local entrepreneurs. I have one for the building, Harry Snyder, our superintendent, has one for the district. And what we try and do with those programs, or with those advisory committees, they really need to tell us what students need to know in these career fields. As much as we try and stay current as educators, it's always best to talk with like a Mercy Health, if you're talking about our nursing program, okay, where do we need to be training our students? What equipment do we need to change to? Changes in safety equipment, changes in, so an example of auto body, we changed to water-based paints a few years back, because that's the way the industry's going, due to environmental concerns and safety concerns for employees. So what happens when students leave us? Our goal, we're, just like you guys, we're looking for kind of a three-pronged approach with our students. We want them either to continue their education, either in a post-secondary institution, enter in their career field that they studied with us, or go on to the military. Those are the three big approaches or pushes we work with on students. We do have students that, in their senior year, are on place, are in placement, so they've done well enough in their lab program that they can employ in their field, they've passed their certifications. So who employs these people? That's usually why a lot of our advisory members are active, they want the best employees. There, I don't think I have to tell anyone in this room, there, there is a skills gap in our region and in our state. There are needs, especially in areas of construction, at really any hands-on field, they're, they're struggling to get employees that show up to work, are drug-free, and can stay off their cell phone. Those are probably the three biggest things I hear about from employers that I work with. The first one being drug-free. So what we do is, we work with our students really on those goals, and those that get employed, 95% of our employers will employ our students, again, which are our students, and 93% of our students continue their education, most of them are employed while they're doing it, and then 174 of our students went on to a national competition. So we have, we don't have athletics, students still, we always encourage our students to participate in their homeschool athletics, but our, our athletics would be our skills programs where they compete at the regional, state, and national level. We've had 174 compete, and that was just last year. And that can lead to scholarships for students, that can lead to greater opportunities for employment within-state and out-of-state, just get some exposure to something that they wouldn't have seen before. So what impact do we have? We had a study through the UC Economics Center done last January, so it's $115 million in yearly economic impact, that's something we're trying to emphasize to the taxpayers, that they are getting good value for their dollar. How are we, how are we financed? We're financed just like Norwood, we are local property tax financed, 66% of our funding comes from our single levy. We have one, one levy of 2.7 mil, it's renewed every 10 years, so this is our 10-year renewal, the last time we went for one was 2008. 30%, some of the matching funds that come from the state, and then 4% are some federal Perkins dollars for our district. So again, our vast, our vast amount of our funding comes from that property tenants. Our funding has been used to pay for renovations at two of our campuses, so Scarlet Oaks was renovated about 10 years ago, and Diamond Oaks was renovated eight years ago now. Those were all financed through that levy, we did not have to do an additional bond issue. We were fortunate in that regard. Our goal, though, with, hopefully, the passage of our levy in November, is that we can finance the renovations for our Live Oaks campus in Milford and Laurel Oaks up in Wilmington. What is, what is the challenge? Again, it's our only source of local funding is this levy that comes up in November. We have not increased our bill since 1988, we do not, we will not be increasing it this time. One difference, typically, it's a 10-year renewal, but is on the ballot in November is continuing. What that will allow us to do is leverage our money long-term with our renovations, so we don't have to be kind of tied to that 10-year mark. The plan, this will not, if a taxpayer asks you, this will not increase their taxes currently, what is, you know, what does 2.7 mil work out to be? It's a pretty, pretty small amount, and I'd get that in a second. If you are into fiscal numbers, and I'm sure you are, so what would happen if our levy didn't pass, which, you know, we do have to think about, there was a time, I believe the last time, it was one time in the Oaks history that it didn't pass, which I believe was 1984. We do have some money currently that we could operate into next year. If the levy did not pass, though, by 2020, we would cease to operate. I can tell you, what, what that would do is certainly hurt opportunities for students. I'm not really sure how the state of Ohio would handle it due to our size. Hopefully, it's not something we have to face, but it is something to think about as a school board, because there is a requirement for career technical education that we partner with you for, and that burden would be shifted to you at a greater rate than what you're having to deal with now. Here's the advantage that we have, 88% know who we are. 10 years ago, it was 77%, so that's a great jump in the, in the 10 years. So that's a great jump in the, in the 10-year span. So we are, we are better known than we were. Certainly awareness is great. How many people like you also helps. So 72% have a favorable impression. That was 64% in 2007. So again, that's up. Here's kind of the kicker. Only 22% of the people surveyed actually understand that their homeowners' dollars, their property tax dollars go to fund Great Oaks. And most of that's because, like myself, my property taxes are paid through my mortgage company. I get the statement from the county, but I don't always pay a lot of attention to the line items that are on there. The bank pays it twice a year. So that's really probably our main hurdle in the next two months is to get the word out that we do need voter support. And we certainly hope that the voters see that this is of value to them. It just, we just need to make sure it's a renewal. It's not a tax increase. They won't have to pay any more than they're currently paying. The only difference is, the goal would be, we would not have to come back in 10 years. Do this again. What questions can I answer? I know we kind of flew through that. I want to be respectful of your time, especially since I was late. So I'm willing to answer any question about Scarlet or about the district. I've worked in different capacities for the districts. So I can probably field most of your questions. If not, I can get you an answer just like the trend data, whichever you get. Actually, you'll have that tomorrow. So we have a board meeting tomorrow, and I can pass that along. So I'll have it then.
Dan, what's your contact information in case they want to email you a question?
So my email is rushd@greatoaks.com. If you'd like to call me, my direct line is 612-5701. And my cell number is 375-6372. All of those, day or night, I think everyone in this room knows, education's not a 95 job. So if you send me an email, you'll hear from me typically that day, if not that day, the next day. And if you call me, it's the same. My expectation is that I get back with people within 24 hours. Hopefully with the answer that they want.
Something I've always wondered about Great Oaks, is it just a Cincinnati group or is there Great Oaks in other cities? Or is it just, you guys are here and other similar programs that are about?
So I actually, I actually live in Butler County, so north of here. So getting home will be almost more fun than getting here.
Take them in one and reroute.
The way it works in Ohio, depending on what part of the state you live in, but definitely in southwest Ohio, there are regional, what used to be called vocational schools, now career centers. So they were started about in the early 70s. So a little bit, about 50 years now the Oaks has been around. The way it works is typically they're county-based. So Butler Tech is the example in Butler County. US Grant is the example, if you were to go to southeast of here. So Grant County, Lawrence County, same thing. They all have their own career centers. The Oaks, when all of these were started, the Oaks started with the Laurel Campus up in Wilmington. It was on Air Force Base. We were able to get it at a reasonable cost and renovate it. Students actually lived there the first few years of that school's operation. So it was almost like a boarding school. They would go and stay all week and then go home on the weekends. We've gotten away from that model. I sometimes wonder, I don't know if I could handle that as a ministry. But it would have been need to try. The Scarlet Oaks campus opened the year after that. And then over time, as districts went to look for either expanding or providing career and technical education, the Oaks became a more cost-effective alternative. So when I went to high school, my high school operated their own career technical program. Cincinnati Public still does. They're one of the few in the area. So Hamilton City used to. They actually just got out of that business just this past year and went with Butler Tech. So really the way it works is partnerships through various districts like Norwood that allowed the Oaks to expand. And over time, because we had that campus up in Wilmington, and then we have the ones that were around 275 Beltway, there was just a natural progression of those districts that were kind of along 71 and that were further out east. They all just started linking up and entering into these agreements through school boards and then through the Ohio Board of Education of going with the Oaks as far as being a career technical worker. So that's in a nutshell how it's all come to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
No problem.
Being here, being a representative, thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you, and I apologize for my tardiness. I will give myself attention. Again, you have my contact information, but if you have any questions, let me know. I will also be getting that answer for Ms. Ballard.
And always feel free to contact me. Scott has my contact information. Or you can go through Scott and he can, we're always in contact.
Well, thank you too, all of you, and safe travels, Dan.
Thank you. She's got her phone, so that's good.
It will be faster going out.
As long as it's not 75. That's where the paint is. 75 North, just by Reagan.
He can go the back.
Yeah.
Mr. President, sorry if you, I'd like to go ahead and with items for you. That is a job description that I offer to you. It is a new job description. It is a position that presently, we do have someone serving in that role. And we knew that it was important to develop a job description that fits with how he's serving this school year. And so these are items that we think represent that work. And of course, it's specific to, of course, reducing student truancy. So this may encompass home visits. He will coordinate with enrollment to make sure that we help get students enrolled. And the challenge with enrollment, of course, is coordinating and making sure folks are enrolled for free and reduced lunch programs. And then the follow-up of that, of course, is reducing student debt. And those kind of mirror one another. If you can get them enrolled, then of course then we don't have the debt that continues to compile. So he has been afforded a cell phone to do that work because he will often need to make home visits. He will have the technology so that in case he does need to help families fill out paperwork at a home, that he can do that. And he will have access to Spanish translation services should he need that. And so we are working our best to see how this works out this year and see if this is truly helpful in helping us with, of course, our student attendance, truancy, enrollment, and of course, reducing student debt with regard to food services. And so far, we're off to a very busy start. I believe just yesterday and today, he called about helping parents understand that any of their child immunized. We had about 30 students at the middle school and about 40 at the high school that eventually will not be permitted to attend fatal cases of immunization shots. So I know we start that work in transition before they even become, before they leave the elementary, before they become seventh graders in those schools. There's always work to do. Do you see there's anything that I failed to include or you'd like to see included in this job description? We want to be all-inclusive. I believe it provides us the flexibility. As you see the fourth bullet from the very bottom, ability to be flexible as to work, as to other work assignments within the district.
I do have a question, Kathy, if I may. In regards to the free reduced lunch, I know that on the online application, there is a line, but it's farther down past the submission point. Is there a way that we can work with our tech guys to have that be a mandatory part of the enrollment process? So that way, they can't finish enrollment until they either say, "I don't need this service," or "Yes, I do." Fill out the form. So that way, it's a built-in part of, and that would help alleviate a little bit of that. But it would require parents to enter that information or select to bypass it. Just make it part of the, the online service.
I'll find out. If you see something as you process this, even this evening or in the days ahead, I do want to make sure we capture it. We've had our review team to view it, but if there's something that you know, because we're closest to the work that we've missed, we want to make sure we include it.
So I do have a couple of questions if you may. So with this job description, this is a new position. So where does this fall in our organization's work?
So right now, we intended for it likely, right now, this, this person has, so it would fall responsible to me. It would not fall under food service. It was one of those additional, along that continuum, added out to the side. So this person would not report to food service, would not report to principals. They'd report directly to me with a weekly report.
Okay. And all of this-
I'm not sure that it's something I see as having for a period of time. If it's extraordinarily successful, that would be great.
Right. Okay. And so all of this work that's on this job description, how was that handled? Who handled that work and how was that done before?
Well, that's interesting. That was the challenge, is that a lot of that work was not necessarily completed. And I think we failed to serve our families and get students signed up. So we made efforts with phone calls. We made efforts with sending letters. But what we find in the end is it takes a personal human connection. And this individual that's serving in this role right now does have that human personal connection with people and can make home visits. And we think that's where we'll have to go to people's homes in order to accomplish the task.
Okay. And then since we're evaluating this for this year, so what are the criteria that's going to be set up to determine whether or not this was a success or a huge waste of time?
Well, I think it would certainly be a reduction in our debt. And right now, this campus knows exactly what our debt is with regard to food service.
It's about $50,000 in old debt.
In old debt. Now, old debt is considered greater than a year, six months?
I think it's students that are no longer with us. So, or outstanding charges for, I guess it would be current students too.
Okay. So-
And we believe those are students that didn't get signed up. But see, if you're not signed up, the debt is not forgiven.
Right.
And, and beds do not give you the money to cover those previous charges. So that's why enrollment is so important.
No, I, I get that. I do. But if it's students who are no longer with us that carry this debt, I mean-
Well, we're still trying to resolve it going forward because it happens year after year after year that we don't get, we don't get families enrolled so that students aren't being fed and we're not getting paid for it.
Right.
So even though it may be, you know, a large portion of it may be from old debt that we can't collect anymore, we want to resolve it going forward so that our free and reduced rates go up to an appropriate level so that we know our kids are being taken care of.
They are always fed though.
Yeah.
That's why we see it made mandatory, so that we don't have that issue.
So today, this has fallen on, for example, building principals have tried to help to get people signed up. They've helped to collect debt.
Right.
And what we've tried to do is instead of waiting for the debt was created and realizing who's on the list, who isn't paid, is going out from the very beginning. So that's why this person has worked, actually in this building, closest to where enrollment takes place. And has hopefully been able to be helpful in that.
Well, it's, it's not only how much debt that we can, but it's how much time, because time is money.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
So, so of those individuals in the past who have assigned some of these duties, how much time does our building principals, have they focused in the past in doing some of this work?
Not much time because oftentimes then folks would say that, you know, this really falls to the food service person. Or this really falls to one person, for example, the secretary who's there in front, and that person does the enrollment.
Right.
And so, you know, oftentimes enrollment means that you have four or five people in an office just clicking through and getting through the paperwork.
And really, I think with just having one person handle the free and reduced applications, we're following the law a lot better too because we're supposed to follow very strict guidelines on where that information is shared or not. So I'm more comfortable with knowing that one person is really working to get parents enrolled, students enrolled. And another point is, is that the free and reduced rates actually drive some of our general fund, funding from the state also. We get economic disadvantage funding.
Right.
So.
So I think organizational skills. I mean, because this is a big task.
It is.
Okay. And then I apologize for going back to the old debt. What is our exposure to debt that we can't collect?
I have been told that the general fund is not allowed to absorb that old debt. I have not heard that from an official source though. So right now, it's still hanging out in the cafeteria fund as old debt, and I'm not sure how legal that is.
I'm just wondering if there's any way that it could just, you know, after a certain period of time, you just say, okay, you know, these kids are now 30 years old.
Yeah.
Let's just write it off the books and just call it a loss.
That's kind of what we do in the cafeteria fund. You know, their revenues are missing is what it looks like. And they just continue to move forward with the general fund advancing money to keep them in the black every month. So eventually, we probably should do a true transfer to cover the old debt. But the way that I'm feeling about it right now is I want to make sure that the cafeteria is profitable before we go down that road. I don't want to send money there and not see it be profitable or at least break even first.
We suggested that is where we can be better successful using federal commodities, which will come to us free. And so we suggested that.
And it's just like school districts. I mean, it's just like the general fund, we have to review our staff constantly. You know, if there's not enough kids, we cannot continue to keep our staff levels the way they are. It's the same way with cafeteria. If, if we're not feeding as many children, we don't need as many staff to complete those meals. This is just constant.
Really been under review is, they will need it if you don't provide something that they'll eat. And it doesn't matter if it's free. And our debt doesn't create that.
That is something that-
That one's changed on that roll.
That is something that I'm interested in getting is our federal, our free reduced participation rate.
Right.
How many students that are free and reduced are eating. I'm going to get that percentage and I'll be able to share that with you because that is a very key percentage to tell us how successful is our program.
So that's only half of this job, right? Because the other half of it's enrollment truancy.
Which we used to have somebody that handled through Hamilton County.
You had a truancy officer.
We do have that person. That person certainly represents with regard to the work that had, the meetings that had to take place because of Hospital 410. So this person can do some of that work. What we hope is that when this person shows up at homes and they see even smaller children, they can help the family make the connection with, "Oh, we have a Norwood kids program. Oh, we have a preschool." And so help them then to, to funnel them to other agencies within our organization that can make the educational process healthier for the entire family.
And with regard to the immunization portion, I know that our nurses used to do a lot of that burden checking charts and making sure that everybody had that. I'm assuming this person would then report those findings to our nurse that they could update student files?
No, our nurse is actually doing it. And they're asking this person to aid or help them in making all those phone calls.
Okay. At, I know we were-
Personal phone calls versus another letter or another automated robo-call.
Right.
Personal phone calls.
I know we were talking with the group about having a potential for a clinic coming in to our high school. Do we have any further information about that?
For help, no update on that.
Okay. Because that would be great for solving some of the immunization gaps that we have. We could send them directly there.
Parent permission to give them whatever inoculation. And that's where we are continuing to struggle is to get that permission.
Are we expecting to hear from them anytime soon?
We should. We signed an MOU for them for the planning phase for this school year. But I have not talked with Deb Robinson as to an update on that.
So who is the district attendance liaison?
Right now, it is Julie Anan from Hamilton County Educational Service Center. I represent the district when it comes to attendance.
Right. And then- Right. And then, what percentage of our student base is considered to be chronic trinity?
Well, you know, Hospital 14 just started last year. So I don't know that I could answer that question for you.
It's different in each school, but it is definitely over thirteen point six in our buildings.
Thirteen point six percent?
Over thirteen point six percent. We had a list that we generated this summer before this week started, and the person in this position also reached out to our chronically absent families to hopefully make home visits to say, to tell the truth about the situation, that you're not sending your children to school, and it will jeopardize their experience and their graduation. So we started there with some of this work, because we had the list of names in a really uniform manner that made it very efficient to do.
Yeah.
So that's where it started this summer. That was one of our target concepts in early August.
Okay. So, so let's say-
I'm sure what it's yielding.
So let's say we have a baseline of thirteen point six percent, right? And that's based on hours or days, or does it matter?
It ends up being about the same, but it's always hours now.
It's always hours. So, you know, if you could get the attendance number better, that translates into better funding from the state, correct? Because you have more kids.
It's in your enrollment.
Right.
It's just enrollment? Okay.
But some of our chronically absent continue not to come at all. So, but they're on our, we carry them on our books until we find out if they've gone somewhere else, and we keep looking for them.
Right.
It could result in a poor achievement score.
Right.
Or not participation.
It results in everything. Poor, poor health, poor mental health, poor achievement, poor social, emotional well-being.
Gotcha. So, so I apologize for this, but I just kind of want to drill down here. So we're going to look at having this person focus on reducing debt and getting people signed up for free and reduced lunch. And then we're, so there's a target value. So, let's say if that person is able to affect that number by X amount of dollars or X percent, then that's considered a success. And then, same way with the other half of the job, which is this chronic trinity, if your baseline is thirteen point six percent, at what point do we say, okay, if you reduce it by, you know, half, you know, to where now we're looking at seven percent, that's considered a success?
They're gauging it by a, I can't remember if we're going a couple months ago, that this number, if it is affected at a certain percentage rate, they want to see a one, I believe it was one point five percent decrease by the next school year to be considered successful, at, with the goal eventually becoming three percent. But if you are at a higher rate, they want to, they want to see that you are making strides at, at a minimum interval to, to qualify under the House bill. So because of the changes that we have, it, it affects how this is. So I would say, as long as we are meeting state standard-
Right.
-then the person would be considered effective under the House bill. If that makes sense.
Well, that's, that's-
Right.
That's my whole point that I'm getting to. If we're going to have this person in this position to do this work, then they have to show value to the district, either by saving time in other areas, or by affecting our bottom line in a way to either get more kids in the school more consistently, or by reducing that, that old debt, or, you know, increasing the free and reduced lunch. And I, I just think if, you know, we're going to use this year as an experiment, you know, let's really get some, let's really put some thought into what we would consider a successful year. So that way, at the end of the year, when we look at this, we can decide whether or not, yes, this was worth our time, or, you know, this was, this was chalked up to an experiment, and let's, you know, look at it a different half of the year. So, that's my thought.
I would just like to confirm that this is, this is a one-year contract.
I have the debt numbers. I didn't think to look it up. That's forty-two thousand four hundred is the total debt. Twelve thousand eight eighty-seven is for no longer, for non-current students.
So that, so that twelve thousand, we're really not going to be able to affect at all.
Right.
So it's really, it's a thirty thousand dollar difference that we can potentially affect. Okay.
And very well, those could have been people who are students who qualified, but for various reasons.
Correct.
Is there a way to know what building, I mean, is it, you know, so we see the largest percentage of free and reduced at elementary, and then it drops by significant numbers all the way through high school. So I'm hoping that these numbers aren't just coming out of high school. You know, is this high school debt? Is this elementary debt? Is there any way that you know that, Julie, or?
Yes, I can pull that up. The, the problem is, is a lot of times, especially for inactive students, that you don't consider it until it gets to high school, because that's when they leave. So, that would give a, kind of a, not, not the correct picture. But yes, I can, I can get all that and give it to you.
And in the past, we've seen that it did drop after the high school because of the stigma of the free and reduced. And that was always a problem that we had. And with the point of sale software, it was supposed to help us to highlight that and to capture that information. I don't know how successful that's been.
I mean, if those, if that, if the high school could get raised to that, seventy percent or whatever, I don't know what it is at elementary. I mean, that's a huge jump.
It is. And, and the one thing that I've already asked all the principals and our director of the cafeteria to do immediately is to start doing family applications. Tell everybody they have to put their entire family on the application, whether they want free and reduced or not. It's, and that just qualifies everyone. So if we can just get that process straight, that will help us a lot. And that's, I think, the personal communication, the way we're doing it now, that, that will really help make parents understand that, that it's, it's good for the whole family.
Is there a way to make lunch, like a prepaid system, have the families pay online, so that way no student is paying at a registered period, so that you don't have the stigma of, well, I pay, well, I just walk through, or I scan a card?
We already have that option.
So then, how, how did that affect our students' participation?
It's just, it used to, it goes back, I think, to the days when we had the red tokens and green tokens that you walk through, and it's never really changed.
Because I think if you don't see anybody handling money, then where does the stigma exist? But I really do think that that paperwork needs to be required in the enrollment process. It shouldn't be a follow-up. It shouldn't be something we have to do separately or pay someone to go after people to fill out paperwork. It should just be part of the, part of the enrollment. And it would save everybody a lot of time, and obviously it would save us a little bit of money not having to pay somebody to go out and do it.
I'm not sure where the statement is, though, because everyone presses in as four or five numbers.
It's a mental-
Whether you pay, you know, or it's free.
I thought you couldn't graduate if you still owed out any type of fees or anything like that. Do we not require that debt to be?
Even, even the schools that say that you can't graduate, what they mean is you can't walk. You can't withhold their education from them, their diploma and things like that. So I'm not sure if we do that or not. But even schools that do, it's just you're not walking. You're still going to get your diploma in the mail.
Yeah, it used to be you can't get your report card.
I would be like, don't get my report card, don't.
But with the add-in and progress block, I guess.
Right, right. So we have no incentive whatsoever to encourage folks who owe us debt for their lunches to actually pay it?
We've talked about some other things. We've talked about withholding field trips, dances, prom, that kind of stuff. Those are things that, if you say you can't go to prom until you pay your, the last ten years of lunch fees, that usually gets paid by grandma or somebody.
Well, the, the problem there is you're penalizing-
You're penalizing the wrong person.
Yeah.
For their parents being not responsible.
It is.
I have a hard time with that.
It is. And we've, we haven't, we haven't started that. We've just been talking about that, because I want to know all the pros and cons first.
A lot of high school teachers end up covering the cost, so they can graduate and walk.
All right. So my, my thoughts on this, I mean, I, I think it's a good job description. My thoughts are that, you know, I'd like to see some sort of metric for us being able to determine at the end of the year whether or not this was worth it. Adam, however, when, how many others?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The individual won't be evaluated, right, using the same tool that you use for insurance. Ms. Breckin, if you, it's all right with you, we'll move, I think this is our last topic for discussion items, and that is a report from our director of curriculum. So we know that the statements or parts will be released this Thursday, actually.
Favorite time of the year.
It does not represent all that we do, and so we are working to develop a quality profile, and that would represent all the other things we do besides how this is viewed so narrowly. And so, there are six components. As you can see, they're attached to the report card, and our director of curriculum, Mrs. Johnson, is here to help talk us through it.
So, in this packet, it begins with Norwood City, and then all the respective schools that will be behind that. So we'll kind of use the district as our guiding, and maybe talk about that in a little more detail, so you get a sense for how it's different than in years past, or how it's the same. So out of these six components, this is the first year that we will receive a grade for each component. So you'll notice grades, not just an overall grade, but also one grade for everything. Each of those areas are not weighted the same in terms of finding out your final grade for the district or school. Achievement is worth twenty percent, as is Progress. And Progress is kind of the old value-added score that we've talked a lot about in the past years. Everything else is worth fifteen percent. So I think that's important to know, what the state deems as more important than other areas. So if we look at the district, we'll start with Achievement, because Achievement is what most people realize are all of the indicators. So for the district, for a typical district, you have twenty-three state tests. So those are all the tests beginning in third grade through eighth grade, and then the seven high school tests. So those are the state end-of-year tests or end-of-course exams that we have at both the high school and the elementary. So those represent twenty-three. In addition to that, this year, there were two more indicators that they wove into the indicator component of Achievement, and that was chronic absenteeism. So that's why we have a very strong level of detail now. And it's a challenge for our district, it really is. And Amber kind of highlighted or hinted at, if you are above the thirty-six threshold, thirty-six point seven, you have to improve every year moving forward by one point one percent. If you're below that, you have to improve by three percent. So we know where we are now, and we know what we need to do to achieve that indicator. That is a challenging indicator, believe it or not, for us to achieve in our district. Also, there is a gifted indicator for each of the buildings, and, and it's, it's made up of three areas. Gifted students have to reach a certain performance level collectively, and it's a one-seventeen for their performance level. They have to, we have to show and demonstrate that not only do we test a certain percentage of students, that we also serve a certain percentage of students. And you get what's called input points to get to eighty. The goal is eighty to achieve that. And then they have to make the value-added score, which means in their bracket, if I'm a gifted student and I'm at the highest level of achievement, I have to show a year or more's worth of growth. So that's also part of the indicator. So for the district, we have those twenty, twenty-three indicate, oh, and then the last, they added a new indicator, again. The third new indicator is an end-of-course retake. So for all the students that scored a one or a two on a previous end-of-course exam, if they retook that exam and demonstrated improvement, you could achieve an indicator for that. So that's all woven into that, really that one-liner of indicators met. And I can certainly talk in more detail of all this, but really, everything is like a day-long conversation. So I just want to kind of give it to you at a glance, and just know that I can always revisit it. So for us, for indicators met for the district, that was a challenge. And so you'll see that we received an F for that. But for each of those tests that we took, students are given points for how well they did on the test, and for that, we've received a C. Those two areas combined together represented the component grade of a D for Achievement for us. So that's the similar pathway to each of our schools. And, and I'll tell you, each of them have different numbers of indicators depending on their level. Of course, all the elementaries have the same number of indicators, except for Sharpsford Primary and Elementary, they're a little different, and we'll talk about that. But for us, for Achievement, that we did receive a D. And we're not pleased about that. There are other parts of this that we are more pleased with, but Achievement, this year, with that eighty percent as a goal, was still challenging for us. And it is the second year where eighty percent is the threshold for all of those indicators. So, that means in third grade, you have to have eighty percent of your students achieving that goal. For the district as a whole, we received the indicator in fifth grade science, in the retake indicator, and then also American Government. Those were the areas that we were successful this year for Achievement. If we move on to Progress across the page, we received an overall goal as a B for Progress, and that represents, again, twenty percent. The one thing about Progress is that I noticed, and it just came out this afternoon, and I noticed a pretty significant error on it. So they're, they'll need to fix that before it's released. And I can't imagine it's just our district. And the reason the error was so glaring is because they calculated social studies in sixth grade in this component, and we haven't taken a social studies test this past year. So that was pretty glaring to me. So although, I hope that for some of the schools, this is an accurate representation, one of two things happened. It's on the chart, but it wasn't calculated. It's just accidentally left on there, or it was calculated, and it's, the whole thing is an error. But they will need to fix that, because that's a problem. And I can't imagine it's just us. It's too, I mean, the standard, it's on their, their spreadsheet. So it looks like an error to me.
I have a question. It says students with disabilities. Do we want more students with disabilities, or do we want less students with disabilities? Why is it grading us necessarily on how many?
So, this Progress talks about how much growth each of those subgroups did from one year to the next. So what that's noting is, if you look at overall, overall, all of your students collectively together, did they make more than a year's worth of growth? And an A means yes, they did. They made more than a year's worth of growth. You want to see an A. You want to see a C actually, too. That's, that means that they're right there. They made a year's worth of growth. So for the district, our overall value-added score of an A, if that is accurate, is really something to feel good about, because that means for wherever the students are in their learning experience, they grew at least a year, which is what you want, or more. An A represents more. So that's really solid work. And we, over the course of years, we've kind of said that that's one thing we do really well, is grow our students from where they are.
Yet, they still could have not passed the test.
That's correct. So that's why this seems like you have a D in one area and a B in another area. It feels a little bit like it doesn't match. Our gifted students in this area, so every student that's gifted in their respective fields, they look at their scores and say, did they grow? So if I'm achieving at the highest level and I'm advanced, I have to maintain that advanced level in my area of giftedness in order to be considered making a year's worth of growth. I have to stay in, in essence, my rank order with everyone. I can't drop to proficient, because that wouldn't demonstrate a year. I should maintain where I am. So this means that our gifted students, that some of them did not maintain. Our lowest twenty percent in Achievement, those are the students that just, they might not be a student with disability. They might just be limited or basic. Did they grow more than a year's worth of growth? So that's what that's indicating, and they did. And then finally, our students with disabilities, all students that have an IEP, did they grow at least a year's worth? So, when you put those scores together, and they tabulate them, and they each actually have a different percent that they're valued at, it became with a B component grade. So-
You're saying a C is a year's worth of growth?
It is, a year's, it is.
Is that, is that defined anywhere?
It is. So each of these have like correspondence- So each of these have like corresponding percentages and charts. And I should highlight that when we talk about a B, it doesn't necessarily mean, not everything's a standard, 90 to 100 is an A, 80 to, 80 to 89.9 is a B, it doesn't work that way. They adjust the percentages for each of these areas, so it gets a little tricky, and it's, it'll be shown, it'll show itself more under graduation rate, but each of these have their own definitions, and their own way that they come across their calculation. So yes, there is detail on each of these existing pages, that I'm happy to explain, but it might be a lot for one night.
I had a target, above, below, way above, way below.
To begin the conversation, because there is a lot to talk about.
There is. And it's not, it's certainly a worthwhile conversation, but it might be a little, a lot for one evening. Gap closing is next. So gap closing, this is an interesting one. This means that our, all of our students that are in a subgroup, so in this area, they they focus, they do focus on all students, but they also look at what they consider the most vulnerable. So students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, African-American students, non-Hispanic students, so our white students, everybody has their own subgroup and area. So in this measure, they look at reading, math, graduation rate, and now, ELL. So you have to have at least 30 students in each of these subgroups to count as a group. So that's important to note, too. We actually did really well in gap closing, and we actually had a C, but then, one of our subgroups didn't participate in a high-enough level, so you get a deduction. So we got a letter deduction, so we ended up with a D. So that was disappointing.
So one of our subgroups didn't perform at a high enough level?
Didn't participate.
Didn't participate.
At a high enough level.
So we didn't have 30?
So we received a demotion.
Who didn't have 30 students?
No, we had 30 students, we had, because you, you have to have at least 30 to even count as a subgroup. For academic, for participation, you have to have at least 40 students to count as a subgroup. So if I only have 30 white students, I wouldn't count as a participation subgroup. I'll count as an academic subgroup, but not a participation subgroup. So this subgroup had over 40 students, but out of, we didn't, we missed the cut by four. So four students didn't take an end-of-course exam, is what it boils down to. Now, one thing that we do really well in this district is we participate. So the principals work so very hard, and the assistants and the counselors, to offer retakes for students that happened in this at the first time around. Every day, we've, we look for, to find them, and these are simply just students that just didn't show up during that three, it's a three-week window. So for three weeks, we searched to try to find all of these students, and in this particular subgroup, we couldn't reach everyone we needed to reach. To be above 95%, you have to be above 95% for participation, and we didn't make it, and we were off by four. So that was really disappointing, because we've never missed participation, and it probably has a lot to do with the new procedures for absenteeism. So we keep searching for these students that we can't find, and it shows itself throughout the report card. So it's kind of an interesting thing. But we had moved from, in a previous year, we had an F in gap closing, when all was said and done. And this year, we would have had a C, like a legitimate C. But I'm not saying that those four students aren't important, of course, they're important, but I sure wish they would have just come in, and we could have given them a test.
They didn't show up once in the three weeks.
In those three weeks.
They walk in the door, they're taken...
They're grabbed. They are grabbed. And I, and most, these aren't really our third graders, they're more high school students, if, you know, if we're going to pin one...
So we had four students just not come to school for three straight weeks?
These are like chronically true, and we can't find them, students.
Right. So we, when we received the list, I thought, surely this is incorrect. So we went through the list, and I will give a lot of credit to Mr. Winorod, because he knows his students really well, and for every student, we wrote the story, so that we knew it was, first of all, accurate, so you won't, don't want to be hit on something that's not even accurately reflecting your work. But there was a story about why that student didn't come, and we had, you know, he had anecdotal notes, but then he just simply knew everything about their stories, because they had worked so hard to try to get them here. So that was disappointing. So we took a deduction for that as a, as a district, and that wasn't good to see. So...
So Brandon Williams gave a game at the tennis court.
Next is graduation rate. So you'll notice our graduation rate. These are students that start as freshmen together, they're in the, the minute you step foot in a high school, you're placed in a cohort, and then four years later, you have, you should be graduating with that cohort. So the first set of numbers are 81.8% of our students did just that, they graduated within those four years. So they started together, and they ended together. And 81.8 is actually a D. So even though you might think, oh, 80s are in the B range, they are not, so it's a D. For the five-year cohort, so the, the goal of the five-year is, just in case it might take you one year longer for any reason, they're, they allow a five-year cohort goal, and for that, we received a C at 86.7. In combining those two parts, we received a D for graduation rate. That does not capture deferred students, as we've talked about at length, about how our deferred students are often in two-year programs, and they just aren't captured by this. Even though they've met all the graduation requirements, their IEP allows for, and we certainly support them continuing their education. So that's one thing that we struggle with a little bit, in terms of the pedagogy behind it.
So if, if we took that number, and kind of calculated ourselves what that percentage would be, where would we be sitting at? Would we be above 90%?
For our graduation rate? Oh, if we added in the deferred students?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Like, how would that affect the number?
How many students did we have last year? Do you remember? Seven?
Yeah.
So we'd, we'd be a lot closer, because our graduation class last year was 136, am I remembering right?
Oh, no, graduating classes were 150...
154.
It was a big group.
That was the year before, 136. So, you know, everyone carries a pretty large percentage, so if we would have added seven more students, if all things went well, it would have gotten us closer to our goal of 90, 93.
It's important, you know, that we allow the students who defer to walk in our graduation.
So they're walking with their class?
Because that's...
It's important.
I got a question on graduation.
Okay.
Is there a reason that the rates are different for the high school graduation, or someone in what?
Yeah, that's a great question, so...
What other graduations?
You're like, what other high school do we have? So those are students that don't attend our high school, that are on our books, could be placed in a different learning facility, and still count for the district, but not for the high school.
Okay.
So the, the district carries the burden of anyone who doesn't attend a high school for the correct number of hours for the year, or the same can be true for elementary. If a family moves, who has a student who's taking an end-of-year assessment between the elementary schools, we carry them in the district books, but the schools don't carry them anymore. So that happens. It doesn't happen quite as much as it used to, when we had the conversion schools, it was even, there was a larger discrepancy, but it does, it showed itself here. It made me pause, too, I'm like, hmm, which student is that? Where to figure out? So because we're small, you can kind of figure it out. The next area is K to 3 reading improvement. So this is an interesting component, in that it is based on fall-to-fall scores. So each fall, you remember in my status reports, that we talk about the diagnostic assessment we do for K to 3 students, and that's where this data will roll itself into. So when we start, if I'm a kindergarten student, and I take a diagnostic my first month of school, they're going to compare that fall score to my fall score as a first grader. And if I'm still here, they will count that. And so they decide, we decide if a student is on track for reading or not on track. And if they're not on track for reading, we write an improvement plan, and they start to do some intensive reading work with our Title I support. And we're really fortunate that we have a very strong program for that. So this represents kindergarten to first, first to second, and second to third, and their respective scores. So it is a targeted group that tend to show themselves every fall, and then if they're there the next fall, we are able to chart if they've made growth or not. It's important to note for this group, that these are your most struggling readers. So this represents our IEP students, and our typical students, whom reading is a challenge for them. So at this point, we have a C for that work.
So could you say that's only your, your students that need only IEP and title kids?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Every student who is not on track receives a reading improvement plan in this district. This year, we are, we are altering our assessments, because the state has asked, has requested or required us to do so. So we are using a different kind of assessment for K in 1, and then another assessment for 2 and 3. So for K in 1, it's AIMS Web Plus, and for 2 and 3, it's MAP. So that's what we're using this year. But this score from the previous years represents our data from AIMS Web. And AIMS Web is being replaced for, by AIMS Web Plus, and the state approves those vendors. So you can either use the state assessment they created, probably at this point, a good solid 10 years ago, or you can use one of the vendors. And we choose to use the vendor, it's certainly more sophisticated, and lets us deal a lot more with it. So that's, they've changed the title of this, too. It used to be called K3 Literacy, and now it's called Improving at-Risk K3 Readers. So that's different. And I would venture to say that that was a very political decision. Okay, Prepared for Success is the last component, and that's relatively new. So Prepared for Success is all about ACT and SAT scores. If we did a program called International Baccalaureate, that would be included in there, but we do not. So in the Prepared for Success component, if your students, when they take the ACT score, if they're considered remediation-free on all of those components, they, they get charted into that. If they are, and then there are added bonuses if they receive an honors diploma, or if they score over three points on their Advanced Placement Assessment. So, or the last area that I sometimes lose track of is that industry credentialing. So that's through the Oaks. So we get credit for some of those students as well. This is a harder component for us, to be remediation-free. So at the high school, they do have a bit of a burden, that they want students to get the, be successful in the end-of-course exams, and to get the 18 points, and then to be remediation-free for the ACT. Not really for this, the bigger deal for the ACT is college, quite frankly. So we, we have a lot of work to do in this area. And then there was one error in reporting, our students who scored a 3 or higher on the AP tests, those were not reported correctly, so we submitted a note about that in a waiver, and asked for a watermark to go on a report card that said that it didn't accurately reflect the truth. So we'll see if that gets approved, but we, whatever our score is, we want it to be accurate. So we wanted, we want it to say what it really is, and they weren't really willing to let us go back and fix it, but they, there were deadlines for each of those submissions, so at some point, they might, they would say, you can request a watermark, so we did. So that's our school district at a glance.
So is the, is the component table down at the bottom, is that automatically calculated by the website?
Yes, by the state of Ohio.
Because the Prepared for Success points is incorrect. You can't take something with .75 points, multiply it by a component weight of 15%, and get more than the value you started with.
Hmm. Interesting. So it looks like we'll have to look into that.
I'm also wondering, why do we have gifted students through all of our elementaries, but when we get to middle school and high school, it says that we don't have gifted relevance in our buildings?
So we have gifted students, but it has to be gifted students who take those tests in, in those particular areas, and enough to qualify. So it's all about the quantity who take, and it gets a little trickier in the high school, because most of your tests are freshmen and sophomores, so if you don't have enough students in those two classes that are taking certain tests to generate a number, then it's not reported. So I was concerned about the high school, because I wanted to kind of check that accuracy as well, out of the Progress one. So that's another reason why, when I saw, those just came out this afternoon, that, so I haven't had a chance to say, hmm. But that was my question, too, I'm like, I, I did the webs for the high school, we worked really hard on those, so I just have to go back and say, how many were ninth grade, and how many were 10th grade? And were there enough that should have generated a report? And I thought that they should have been this year, but we'll have to double-check it. So that's why Progress might not be accurate as well.
Yeah.
But Brandon, you bring up a good point about Prepared for Success.
And well, it's not only that, I mean, but I don't know if they've got their rounding thing on their spreadsheet, you know, turned to a wrong level, I mean, but, you know, none of those numbers. You've got the 1.813 that matches exactly what's up in the table.
So that's been around the longest, like, that came out first, so I would imagine that that's been, people, we keep looking at it and making sure it's right, so it doesn't surprise me that that's more accurate.
But Prudential Report, they list a 4, and we're a 395. Gap Closing, they list a 2, and we're a 1.5. The Graduation Rate, they list a 2, and then we have a 2.05. K through 3 Literacy, they list a 3, we're a 2.5.
So I'll have to look at their rounding to see if they're, what they're doing, because this is the first year we've ever seen that, kind of...
I, I think there's some hidden errors there.
Yeah, so we'll see, we'll stay tuned for tomorrow, to see what tomorrow brings. So the same format is true for the high school. The only thing, besides the graduation being different than us, so I'm happy they received a C for it, instead of a D, because we weren't, we weren't very glad about that. They received a motion, so the high school had 10 indicators, and they, they achieved the retake indicator, and the American Government indicator. And they, on the Progress, you can see their respective scores listed there, and they got a C as an overall component for there. Most of our schools in the district did better in reading than we did in math this year. And we're kind of an interesting district in that regard, because we tend to, we tend to show growth in one area over another. It's, it's not necessarily always even, but I will say, for this particular year, reading stood out for the district more so than math. So for gap closing for the high school, they did receive a demotion. So they, they, so they have an F for gap closing. And they, last year, they had an F for gap closing as well. The, the high school this year, compared to last year, is the same. So this year was close to the 80%, or was 80% again, as the goal for indicators, and the high school overall, and all their components, received the same overall rating. For the, the graduation rate, we noted that they did go, they showed some improvement from the district, but it is also the same graduation rate that they had last year, with a C as a grade. Obviously don't have the K3 Literacy component, and then an F is their overall Prepared for Success. What we are, well, I can save that for later, but I, I want you to know that when we see these scores, however they come out, people immediately start the work about how to make it better, and what to do differently. So even though sometimes you look at this, and you can, you can be a bit dismayed or saddened by it, the minute we look at it, we say, what are we going to do differently the next time, and how can we show progress, and what can we put in place for procedures, or what can we put in place at each classroom level to make it better? So the high school overall grade this year is a D for their work.
Sandy, can you tell us again what the Prepared for Success, what, what is that score?
So that is ACT or SAT remediation-free, and we take it during the junior year as a whole class, but anytime they take it, it can be calculated into that part. It is industry credentials, so if they go to the Oaks, and they do this industry credentialing, they can get credit for that. And also the honors diploma, which represents a more higher-level coursework, or higher-level interest in certain areas. There are now six kinds, six kinds of honors diplomas available to our students, so all of those things help contribute to the Prepared for Success rate.
It seems like, haven't we paid... And it seems like haven't we paid for students to do the ACT? Or we pay the?
Yeah. Every student in the state of Ohio now is required to take it during a school day. So we offer it during the school day. It's different than when you're like, "I paid for all those Saturdays. I drove them early." It's different. You can still do the Saturdays, those are still available, and we encourage kids to take it, bless you, because we know that that makes a huge difference when you keep studying and keep practicing and then take it again and again. And even take some of our ACT prep coursework that we have, but we offer it in school for all students.
And I know we offer through 21st Century Public Work After School Programming to help prepare for that.
And we also do it through Gear Up, through the Advisory Bell. So we do a couple of different ways. So that, we have work to do, and the high school is keenly aware of it. So we talk about that a great deal. So that's our high school. For our middle school, the middle school had eight indicators that they could be evaluated on. And you'll see that they received a D in achievement this year. For progress, they also received a D. And probably the area that we're most concerned with was the overall F. So we'll be looking at progress a great deal tomorrow, just to make sure it's accurate and to kind of take it from there for that group. But both achievement and progress, remember, those are equally weighted in this system. Gap closing, they did not receive a demotion in that. So they actually did better this year than last year. So they moved up a grade level in gap closing, so that was good, but a D isn't where we want to be for that. And all the other three components are non-reported because they don't apply to them. So those three first components carry a different kind of weight because they're missing some components, and so it gives them a final grade of a D for last school year.
So just to point out, from the middle school, the Prepared for Success, 0 times 0, and then you get a 607.
Yeah.
The top one doesn't work either.
I can't speak to that, but I probably can by the end of the day tomorrow.
Right.
Because you know I'll be making some phone calls.
However, it's not calculated in the overall points. So if you add 607, it would be a 2.233.
Was it about 2 o'clock?
Which would give us a C.
I think it was 2:20.
When these new scores came out.
So, but what I didn't want to have, I didn't want you to be caught off-guard.
Did we have one addition that we switched?
So I didn't want you to be caught off-guard at the end of the week if there was something in here that I hadn't mentioned yet. So I thought, well, I have to tell them what, show them whatever we know, even if we're not quite sure about it. So Norview, Norview received a D for achievement, and Norview has 11 indicators at their respective grade levels, being, having tests in 3 to 6. Their progress was a B, and I would say that they should feel really good about that overall A for the value-added component. It was a B last year as well, so they're in keeping with what they did. The way they showed their biggest gain was gap closing. Last year, they received an F in gap closing, and they received an A this year. So kudos to them. So they really showed that all of those subgroups could make growth. They don't have to be perfect in the subgroup, but you have to make a certain kind of growth. There's long-term goals and short-term goals, and they made the growth both in reading and mathematics. So kudos to them. And they, of course, don't have a graduation rate, and they had zero demotions, obviously. That means their participation was good, and all of their subgroups scored well enough to not receive a demotion. So I was really happy for that. I spoke to Mr. Yates about it and said, you know, sometimes we just focus on just the indicators, and it's really healthy that we tell the whole story and we talk about the nice work that people did with individual students to achieve an A in gap closing, from an F to an A. Obviously, nothing for graduation rate. And then their literacy rate for K-3 remains a C, and it was last year. So, and then they don't have a Prepared for Success report. And I'm sure my statistical analysis team on my corner have said that this is not accurate as well.
Zero times.
They're going to hire you, too, as independent consultants. We won't send them the tapes. We will work on that tomorrow.
OD is not.
But the good thing here, I mean, if we could take this, there's a formula, there's a formula here that I think we could pull from and move it into other buildings, like a common core one, to say, okay, these are the steps we took, especially for gap closing, to get from an F to an A. And let's learn from that, and let's move that into other areas.
Right, right.
So.
Right. So Sharpsburg, let's take both Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary together, because this is a new phenomenon that occurred this year. So Sharpsburg Primary, as a reminder, is a pre-K-2 building. They don't have any tested areas, and yet they're showing as an F for achievement. And it is accurate, and it's very unfortunate. So that's about absenteeism. It's the one indicator they have, and they didn't achieve it. So that's why they received an F. And so that's a bit disappointing, and we have some paperwork to share with the state about that and how we feel about that. It just seems a bit off, because I think it's a bit misleading if someone from the public says, "Wow, the primary of the building got an F." They should pause and say, "On what?" But nonetheless, it's accurate. So they received an F for achievement, and then their other area is the K-3 literacy, and that's just for grades 1 to 2, or K-1 and 1 to 2, and then it stops. So they received a C for that work. So an F and a C in this formula is a D. So typically, they would have just let the C show itself. And everything, obviously, everything else is non-reported because they don't have a tested area. So if we move back to Sharpsburg, their overall achievement was a C for achievement. They also have 11 indicators, and their performance index is listed there as well. And progress, they received an A for overall value-added score, which is nice. And again, we'll double-check the progress. So right now, they're showing up as a B for progress. Their B for gap closing, they received a demotion, so they're pretty disappointed in that. And their demotion came with their Students with Disabilities group, they didn't achieve at the high enough level as a group. So they received a demotion for that. So although, so it's kind of tricky. There's a score you want them to maintain to show growth, and then there's another score listed below that that they have to get collectively, not just showing growth, but they have to maintain. And that group didn't maintain that. So they were an A and were knocked down to a B. If they had been an A, would have been in keeping with the other two elementary schools. So that was a bit disappointing to them. Last year, they were B, so it would have been nice to show, be able to show that they were an A this year. But we know the challenge, and we'll continue to work through it. Obviously, we all know that our Students with Disability struggle the most with this assessment, generally speaking. Or they wouldn't be in that category. There's something that requires them to have a different kind of program or a different kind of accommodations to support their learning. So we'll continue to work on that one. And their K-3 literacy is also a C for their building, which brought them to an overall score of a B, which is what Norview received as well.
I have a question. I realize that the primary is its own small building, but why do they separate out Sharpsburg from the primary instead of lumping it in, since it is only, you know, those two little, or the pre-through, what first, first you said, in that one building?
Pre-K through second in that one building, yeah.
So why don't they just include Sharpsburg's numbers, even if it's two buildings?
Yeah. So it's because of the IRNs, and so we requested, acknowledged the fact that they're a feeder school. So sometimes in feeder schools, they do lump them together. So we've requested that a couple of years in a row. Could Sharpsburg Primary be a feeder school to Sharpsburg? And they've denied that request. We thought it made sense, too.
Across the street.
Just because, for accountability reasons, but they have not. It mostly deals with the IRN, so it's a different, because they have two different IRNs, they'd like to keep them separate.
Would it help us or hurt us?
Well, that's an interesting, I've rolled it out twice, a couple of times, just to see, like, would this year have made a difference, or would it have been worse? So when it's good, it's good for both, but if something, if something happens at Sharpsburg Elementary that would cause them to be in school improvement, then we would have two buildings in school improvement. So I don't know. So I worked on K-3 literacy last year when I got the scores, and it was, would have been exactly the same grade, because I thought, well, what if I combined just that one thing? Would that have made a difference? It's become a bigger deal this year, in my opinion.
What about the achievement F for us not having?
Right. That's why it became a bigger deal this year. Like, it feels worse this year. Because before, they'd have nothing for achievement and just their C for K-3 literacy for that one component, and that was accurate. But now, because they have an overall score of a D, it feels not as accurate. So we'll keep working with it and maybe ask again. Thus far, every time we've asked for them to be a feeder school, for just even just accountability purposes, they've rejected it. So Williams received an overall score of a C for achievement. So for Williams, last year, they had a D in achievement, so that was a nice letter-grade improvement for them. They also have 11 indicators, and their achievement, they achieved more indicators than our other two elementary buildings, achieving just four of the indicators. Their progress is a B, which last year was a C, so that shows growth. Once you, once you start growing your achievement, the other components tend to move forward as well. So it does all start with achievement. Their gap closing, like Norview, is an A, and they, too, showed really good work in both reading and mathematics for those subgroups and zero demotions. Obviously, no reporting for graduation rate, and their C rating for K-3 literacy is also like our other two elementary schools, and no reporting for Prepared for Success. So they ended up with a B, as did Sharpsburg Elementary and Norview. So our elementaries, their overall grades are all a B at this point in time, and I'll see if anything changes tomorrow. So my final words are just to know that, for you all to know, that people are really, they take this work to heart, and it's important to us, and we spend a lot of time talking about it, and we beat it up a lot over the summer and as the scores come in. And people tend to beat themselves up a lot initially as well. And then we all pull ourselves up and say, okay, what's next? And how do we make it better? And then we start meeting with teachers in the summer and start asking them, what do you think? What are things that were good? What are things that weren't a strength for us? How do we make it better? And it's a part of everything that we do. Every teacher-based team meeting, tomorrow, early release, they're going to be highlighting some of this work again, even though they've gone over it at the beginning of the school year, because it's important. We know it's important for the community and for our work so that people can recognize our good work. It doesn't represent all that we do, but it does represent our work, and we want it to represent as well. Because there are a lot of people working hard to do good work with the ultimate goal of graduation. So that's what I have for you tonight. And of course, we can talk in more detail at future meetings if you wish, or at any time, really, about any of the components. And then once I solve the statistical mysteries, I will keep you posted tomorrow. Because if their goal is release on Thursday, I would imagine there's some things that are going on tomorrow. So.
And they're only basing these off of test scores and that's it, basically?
All test scores, graduation rate, and that diagnostic that occurs for K-3, yes.
So if our kids aren't good at test-taking, let's just say our kids are not good at test-taking, but they're really creative or other things, there's no way for them to grade us on those activities. We have no system in place to showcase the things that our kids may be stronger at.
So this local report card's commitment is for that academic component, but that's what Kathy was speaking of earlier. That's why so many districts are gathering together to say, what else? What about the arts? What about the other ways we support students with athletics and even scholar athletics and high achievement in other areas? How do we create what's called a quality profile so that the community can say, you still have a reason to be proud of your school, and here's why. Let us tell you some of the new things that our students are creating, doing, or are a part of because of good teachers.
So is this, is this where a grade of a C is on target? Right. Is it?
So C would be target?
All educators would say we want an A.
No, I know.
I mean, but their scale is kind of like the somewhat.
I know.
Somewhat agree, not agree, not at all. It's like that. So C is on target, B is above target, outstandingly above target, below target.
And I would say, that's the reason the state came up with the letter grade, is because they thought people would assume that. I think you would, if you ask a teacher, they would say, a C doesn't make their heart sing.
No, it doesn't.
They would change their thing and just say, you're at achievement. You're exceeding achievement. You're outstandingly overachieving. That would be better. I would rather it say, we are on target for our district, than it say, you got a C.
Yeah. We know there's work to do. We're so grateful to do the work, quite frankly, and we are up to the challenge as a collective body, a collective organization. It's good work, it's worthwhile work. We want every student to have a graduation and to go out in the world and be able to do good things. We really want that. I want every student to know how to read by the time they're in 3rd grade, well, really, by the time they're in 1st grade, quite frankly, but they're great for this reporting purposes. So we have, we have the ambition, and we have good tools. We just have to do good work and get our students to come every day and continue to work really hard together. It's not easy, but people that do it really well are very deliberate and are thorough, and we have some shining stars that do things really well all the time. But it's not because it just comes to them naturally. It's not, it's certainly a little bit of a gift, but it's not without really hard, strong, thorough, detail-oriented work. So we know what we need to do, I believe.
Thank you, Mrs. Jefferson.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, that concludes our discussion. I would just say.
Education Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple of field trips that are going to be coming up here soon. The 5th grade at Sharpsburg through Mrs. Ostenhorff, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Dykes, and the Norville Middle School 8th grade, Ms. Gregory, Ms. Weisenberg, Ms. Weisman, and Mr. Lukey. They're going to be taking field trips. The field trips detailed are in the computer under the attachment, and that is all I have.
Question, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, trying to make myself look at the online work, since we have a few recommendations. All of those came in this week, so it'll seem to be a couple of ones, Joxer and Webster. Case direction. For employment. Under number 5.02, we have a change of status for page red under number 1. Number 2, we have a number of folks for avenues for success as they gear up and get moving, identifying folks. Number 3, compensation for additional duties after getting back to practice. We have number 4, a student assistant and educational aide for this school year. You see a number of folks there, Mandy Rosa, Adam Reynolds, Haley Crater, and Christopher Keesh. And then for number 5, we see food service. Christina Polly is a service attendant. For number 6, we see the approval of the job description that we discussed in our discussion portion. Number 7, approval of the stipend, and that's for Joe Wackid to be the DJ for homecoming. And number 8, supplemental contracts for 28 through 29. To the Hall High School, with the exception of one being a middle school advisor. Number 9, we see athletics, and we expect to see a few more added for this next Thursday. And I will make sure that we highlight those for you. And excuse me as I get used to my progressive lenses. And, excuse me as I get used to my progressive lenses. Under number 10, pupil activity contracts for the 2018, 2019 school year. That's where you'll see more additional names for next Thursday. And I think that concludes. Question?
So, can we discuss any of these items?
Yes.
Okay. So, and going back to item number three, I was under the assumption that there was going to be an actual MOU for this, and what I see is not an MOU, I see an email.
That's right, you see a letter agreement. So, attorneys differ, and they're convinced, some believe that if you were going to change a contract adding a position source, that that should be an MOU. If you were agreeing to something else, then that is considered a letter agreement. So, their attorney instructed them to give us a letter agreement, which, not a very formal letter, but that was the agreement. So, just to remind everyone, one coach during track season did resign about halfway through the season. And so, that alone afforded a number of additional duties on particularly one person that took over those duties just naturally. And then, of course, we know one coach was not able to serve, but after a few weeks, was placed in that position.
So, could I ask that you separate this line item out? So that gets voted on separately? I don't know if I'm going to be at the meeting next week in order to be able to vote on this, because I may be out of the country, but as it stands right now, and this has nothing to do with the person associated with this line item, it is purely the fact that I think this sets a double precedent on how we handle supplemental contracts. There were three other individuals last year that were directly affected through mistakes by the administration, and as a board, we tried to get those mistakes corrected, and the NTA said no. And this was after months of silence on an MOU, when we could have just handled it through another way. And now, you know, again, we're here being asked to correct something else, and now all of a sudden, it's okay, and I have a problem with that. So, I would vote no on this, and if I'm here next week, I'm gonna vote no on this, I would implore my fellow board members to also vote no on this. So, of course, you vote your unconscious, but I think this sets, if we agree to this and do this the way it stands, then I think it sets a bad double precedent, and if you're going to fix this, I think you go back and you fix all, since we're now fixing mistakes from last year. So, you either go back and you fix them all, or you fix them. And that's how I feel about it. Right. Anybody else? Move on to policies. So. Six hundred pages. Thank you, Mr. President, yes, after, what, nine, ten, what, 11 hours? 11 hours of meetings with everybody, so.
We still have to really begin to approve the second draft, too. Can you be intent?
Correct. I think what we're going to do is we're going to invite the OSBA representative to kinda give a presentation for this massive work that we undertook. But it was good work. I think there's a lot we learned about ourselves.
Very interesting.
You guys missed out. It was good stuff.
It really was. Well, you know, they stuff the underneath of their pillow and gives them extra support.
No, I enjoyed it, and thank you, Al and Brandon, for your time commitment. Of course, it was really helpful, I think. Really worth going through line by line. If you have not done that, I would highly recommend it.
Sounds like a crap.
I really do. I think it just gives a, you know, really good understanding.
It shows how technical things are. It really does show how very detailed and technical things are in our world.
All right, let's see, buildings and grounds. Yeah, we've got one on there. Yeah. Let's see, financial.
Want to pass it off? Can't help. We do, we do it for her today, and she can give you more detail.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner, Mr. President. 8.01, I have the financial reports, including the treasurer's monthly financial report. I am still tweaking those reports. I'm hoping to make them a little, a little bit easier to read, a little more, or a little less detailed, but to, to give our overall concepts of what's going on each month. In short, we received about $400,000 more in taxes this settlement than I had expected on the forecast. That's always good. Moving forward into the October forecast, we'll probably see a little bit of savings in payroll and spend a little bit more in benefits, so it's always an offset there. I would like to talk to you about the October forecast, with this being my first forecast in the district. I've always presented the forecast in an open session of the board meeting. Is that how you would like to see that happen? Presentation in the October meeting?
Yeah, I think that's what I already formulated as well.
Okay. All right, so I'll do that probably in the committee meeting, and then we'll adopt it in our regular October meeting. Sounds good. Then the other reports that you approve, the fine sum, the check reg, the check pay, and the bank reconciliation is a new report. I don't think you've seen it until this month. The most important thing you can do for internal controls is balance your bank checking account, so I just want to be completely transparent, let you all know that we are balancing and to what degree. Moving on to 8.02, appropriation resolution. This is just our budget for the year. I do have that approved every single month, so that is on the agenda for your approval at our next meeting. 8.03, then and now, purchase orders. These purchase orders have had a variance in the, in the PO processing, process that exceeded my allowance to approve. I'm only allowed to approve a $3,000 variance in a purchase order that exceeds $3,000, I need to bring it to the board. We will be working on that process so that everybody understands you have to have a purchase order before you make a purchase, and that will make these then and nows go away. So, I will be working on that. 8.04, gift card donation. We had a $100 gift card from anonymous donor given. That gift card was raffled off at our beginning of the year employee event. 8.05, we had a donation from the Wallace Family Dentistry, a very generous donation to be used for athletic senior banners, so that students don't have to do fundraising or come up with that money to have that banner as a keepsake. 8.06, transfer and advances. These are money that has been transferred or advanced from the general fund. The advances, or I'm sorry, the transfers, both the debt transfer and the technology equipment transfer are in the forecast that Ernie did in May. Those are expected. The advances, it's a citation on our audit if I run into the negative in any of my funds at the end of the month or at the end of the year, so to avoid that, I advanced money into those funds that you see written out there. I am working on procedures to avoid this. I think just some very simple changes can make it so that we don't have to advance funds, with the exception of the food service fund, because that fund is still operating in the red, so that will need some additional work. 8.07, as we read through the board policies, I received, I realized that any board members that are going to training, it needs to be approved by you all, so we do have it in there for the Capitol Conference for Mr. Faulkner and the Scolar.
I had found out I could go to that. I did get a new job, but I'm not gonna kill the tent, so you're on your own.
He'll be there. Kathy and I will be there, and I, and I do have ample time to cancel everything, so that's not a problem at all.
I could, do you want to go, if you wanna go, or?
I don't remember the dates.
November 11th, 12th, and 13th, I believe.
These are school days, I presume.
Yes. Sunday would, you could come up and do a partial if you wanted to, just come up Sunday and head home in the evening, but I think it's only a half-day of.
Usually Sunday's pretty light.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll jump back into it.
Okay. All right, I'll send you some information, I'll change names around. I do, I did have a, and I've talked a little bit before about the lottery for the hotels, it's just, it's a ridiculous process, but it was worse than usual this year. So, we were all spread out all over Columbus, but I do have the right amount of rooms. I didn't think I was going to there for a while, it was, it's just an unbelievable process.
Did we get any close by?
They are close. It's just, I like, I would like to have us all in the same hotel, you know, so that we could meet, you know, for breakfast or whatever, it's kind of a nice, just catch up, what are we doing today? Where are you going? That kinda thing, but we're all there, and we all have hotels, that's, that's all I could do for this year. 8.08, Norwood Ready Kids Agreement. This agreement serves our birth to preschool students, getting them ready for school, and it is funded by United Way Donations.
I anticipate having a few more MOUs from Deb Robinson and the work that she does, and don't know that they'll follow your financial category, but we'll review those as they come in, Friday.
I did wanna ask, how did our first safety drill for the district go on the 7th? Or, our, I was, I was informed that we were doing our, our first lockdown drill that, that day. Was that successful?
We've done it in all of the buildings, so to date, there have been no challenges or problems. I know in this building, we waited until the PD got here to conduct it, just because we wanted him to be present for it. So, I know they've been given the opportunity. It's legally our obligation to let them have the advance. If we're in practice, they, of course, let them have it included. So, to date, they've all been conducted and all has been practiced.
Okay.
On that note, we'll continue to think about the good folks of Fifth Third as they continue to go back to work. And of course, honor it today as patron's day.
Okay, that's it. We need to start here. So, where, where was everybody 17 years ago?
Neither.
You were in New York?
Yeah.
I was at a customer.
No?
Okay.
How about yourself?
I was there.
You were in New York?
Yeah. I actually took a Delta flight from Cincinnati to Newark, and so, my plane was landing and saw the first plane hit from my window in the air.
Wow.
So, and then at that point, it didn't look, I mean, it looked, because we were, you know, far away, so we thought it was like a small commuter plane and had no knowledge of anything. So, we landed, and I thought it was weird, because it was a Delta flight, and we landed at a United terminal. This is odd. So, we get off the plane, and I'm walking through Newark Airport, and the second plane heads, and then, then they were talking about shutting down the airports. And so, I have, I had Emerald Isle, so I didn't have to stand in the line at the car rental place. I was just gonna pick up my car. But in the five minutes it took, there were hundreds, if not thousands, of people at the car rental place, trying to get out of the airport, because they're talking about shutting the airport down. So, I got a rental car and got out, and I was on the Jersey side on the inner Beltway, stopped in bumper-to-bumper traffic, and watched the buildings fall down.
Wow.
And then, I couldn't call home, Clarissa couldn't call me, because the cell phones didn't work, so I decided that I was just going to punt my trip and took my rental car and drive back to Cincinnati, and it was about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I finally got a cellphone signal.
Wow.
And you were right there too, Val, right?
I was. I mean, mine wasn't like that. I just, we were maybe 20 miles outside of New York on Long Island, and I was opening up a coffee shop for my father-in-law at the mall, so it was like very early, and we were just doing some construction, and I was hanging over saying projects, and I just, the whole entire, you could just hear this gasp, and they, they closed them all over the speakers, and all had opened yet, and they just said, everybody get home, and I, we were going, I was alone, but driving eastbound on the LID, and I could just see smoke behind me, and just, no one was on the expressway except for fire trucks and police and ambulance, I was just such an awful feeling, so. And then, not being able to get in touch with everyone.
Yes.
But we all ended up at like, at my in-laws' place, and there was about 18, 20 people on the end of the road. Because, you know, you're just trying to check, I mean, just waiting for your family numbers, hands and hands, who were walking, sort of, just trying to get home or.
So, Erin was just a couple of months old, and so, Clarissa sat in the floor of our living room with, with Erin, just watching the TV, because there for a while, they didn't tell you which airline. All she knew that I was flying to Newark on today.
I was out on the baseball field. It was like blue sky, bluest blue I've ever seen, there was not a cloud, and we were cleaning up all of our baseball equipment, and they came out and sat us down out on the field. I remember that. And then, I actually remember being very angry at the board at the time, because I had, because I had paid for my trip to France.
That's right.
And they, they canceled our trip, because they thought, even though it was the next summer, they canceled our trip, because they didn't want anybody flying. And I was 17, I wasn't 18, so I couldn't go.
I wasn't on the board yet.
Yeah. But, it was.
Next year, right?
But they wouldn't refund our money through the agency that we booked through, through the school, and I had worked two jobs all summer to pay for it myself, and I took four years of French, and then my mom took me to Mexico. And I was so mad at the board.
Oh, goodness.
Pretty good try.
I was so mad.
My bad.
I'm still mad, because I was supposed to go, and I've never been able to, and I, you know, I lose that language. You don't lose, you don't use it.
Right, yes.
And that was, that was so important to me.